Okay, well, welcome everyone to our quarterly community town hall meeting. The last one we had about three months ago, so Garrison Commander is not here tonight, but our entire staff is here, so we'll conduct the town hall as normal. If you have any questions at any time as we get toward the end, I would ask that it'll be an open forum. So if you have a question before that, you'll just raise your hand, okay? One of the soldiers will bring you a pencil and a piece of paper up there, and you can write your question down, we'll give it to the appropriate service provider, if they're there, they'll try to answer it for you. Or if you want to stand up and ask your question live and in person, you can do that also. Question and answer discussion point will come at the end. So on behalf of the Garrison Commander, welcome to the quarterly town hall meeting. I think Suzanne, we have a proclamation signing to kick us off.
Hello, everybody. I'm Suzanne James, ACS Director. April is month of the military child and also Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so it's our custom that we bring awareness to the community with a proclamation signing that reflects the Army-wide theme for child abuse prevention. And so the theme this year is Children's Safety Comes First, Be Ready to End Child Abuse. And if I could have the next slide, please? Show us the theme for this month. And again, in alignment with our readiness and resiliency focus, we ask the community to also be part of prevention and intervene and report, and please come to ACS for resources. We have a table that is just chock full of wonderful things that we would love you to take back to your offices, back to your work areas, sprinkle these resources around to show what ACS can assist you with, with child abuse prevention. And so sir, if you do the honors and sign our proclamation, Children's Safety Comes First, Be Ready to End Child Abuse. Thank you, everybody.
I think next we have our volunteer recorder.
Evening, everybody. Welcome and happy to see you here. As always, we have our volunteers recorder recognized at this town hall meeting, and we've got five very deserving honorees. Without further ado, we'll kick it off with the active-duty soldier recorder, Captain Michael Dawson, Sixteenth and Fifty-Second Air Missile Defense at Suhwon Air Base. Next, our family member of the quarter, Ashley Young from Sixteenth and Second ASV. She volunteered in several different agencies here at the garrison, and it was stiff competition, but she ended up being the winner. Our youth volunteer of the quarter is Jamie Brown, Dawson, also from Suhwon Air Base. Very active with the chapel and Osang's rules. Next is Corporal G. Young Seo, AJC US Army Garrison Humphreys. Dedicated and very conscientious volunteer at the ACS headquarters with lunchtime learning with the Tutsis about Korea. And last but not least, and I see almost the whole confinement activity is here, I'm wondering if anybody's minding the store? Captain Soncini, acting first Sergeant Freeman, and Guide on Bear. They are our unit volunteer of the quarter. It's partly based on ours, but it's also based on some other factors, size of the unit, and different various volunteer activities, but we certainly appreciate their support. Before I turn it on, turn it over for follow-on for the rest of the town hall, I was asked to just give a quick and dirty briefing, if you will, a couple of blurbs about what we call Operation Appreciation. We've got a handout flyer. Basically, it's a brand-new volunteer award program, if you will, that we try to enhance what we already have. We basically have the annual quarterly volunteer awards here, but several agencies on the installation, MWR, PX, commissary, give us, or in some cases, we also purchase, discount coupons. We've got the volunteer important person parking spot at the commissary and over at the fitness center. So we try to enhance what our, you know, our recognition to our employees, incentive the volunteer and so forth. I've got a flyer, and it's also got Volunteer Appreciation Week next week, it's got all our activities. And next Friday night, you're all invited to come to our annual volunteer recognition ceremony. Not only do we have the volunteer of the year that we'll be honoring, we'll have the organization points of contact, or OPACs for those that are in the know. And we're really looking forward to the Humphreys Central Elementary School Motown performance. You're all welcome, and I hope to see you.
Hey, I'm gonna tell you guys, that's my favorite part of the town hall right there, the volunteer recognition ceremony. How about another round of applause for all those folks? For those of you that don't know, the volunteer, how they recognize those folks, and how they practice for a number of hours, not by the size of the unit, so that's saying something about that unit, that youth, and those individuals, that family member, and that service member. Really great stuff. Okay, I think we're gonna go into our staff briefings, we're gonna start it off with DP TMS, Mr. Rex Run. Rex?
Yeah, good evening. The first slide's about activities that are going on. It's the, there's a newcomer brief every week for, primarily for new employee soldiers that report to USAID Humphreys Head Start, Train Head Start Program, begins sixteen to eighteen, and then twenty-three to twenty-five April. Command group, or meet a command group, occurs at the PX in the lobby or atarium from two May, six June, and also on three July. Town hall meeting is, or the next town hall meeting's on fifteen July, and then upon request, you can get an emergency preparedness brief. The immediate, actually started already, focused exercise, or passage coaching exercise, it's a Neo exercise, it really doesn't involve families. For this, for this exercise, it's more of a setup, care, and make sure all the equipment. The only thing that involves the family are make sure your Neo packages are together. Those will be inspected by your Neo warden. Critical information to the community corrections. Full-scale exercise is coming up, and it follows along with the summer threat, which is a monsoon rainy season, and sometimes not, sometimes there are also typhoons that come through this area, or the peninsula. And since we're close to the, since we're close to the, actually, even if you're further away, it can have an impact, but we're close to the coastline, so it will have a bigger impact at Humphreys. We'll get ample warning if this should occur, and there are plans in place to protect the community in event it does occur. Giant Voice will be activated for almost any type of, critical type of incident, from typhoon, terrorist incident, or closing of the gates, other type of important type incidents. Telephone Mass Notification, you can get that by registering at the back table. This is where you're actually text on your cellphone when something of significance Every morning, there's PT going on for soldiers, and the act of the Eighth Army change, and also we have changed our APFT, or PRT, or PT in the morning, starts a half hour later from six-thirty to eight, so be cautious with soldiers. They have the right of way, even though they may be not where they're supposed to be, but they still have the right of way. The theater opens on the sixteenth, which is tomorrow. I visited there today, it's very nice, I think it's a great improvement. The Civil Defense, defense will not occur this quarter, it'll be tied into the full-scale exercise. Every Tuesday, again, there's a newcomers briefing in April, ongoing now, is the Tutsis Friendship Week. Tax Day is on the fifteenth, next town hall meeting is July fifteenth, or exactly today. Sorry about that. The Korean Head Start, I've already talked about that. Easter is Sunday. Volunteer Appreciation Week is twenty-one to twenty-five. Birthday Celebration on the twenty-first. Threat Awareness Reporting Training is on the twenty-fourth. And then the Volunteer of the Year Ceremony is on the twenty-fifth. Children's Day, an important holiday for Republic of Korea. Sexual harassment assault response training, this is significant. I know family members not attend, but all civilian personnel and soldiers attend this mandatory training. OPSEC Training on the twenty-second, Training Holiday on the twenty-third, Memorial Day on the twenty-fifth. In June, quarterly installation operations meeting on the seventeenth. EEC, Sabrina Training, chemical, make sure your chemical training for soldiers, and also civilian employees. And then that's, if you have any questions for DP TMS, I'll take them either at the end, or, and you can either turn it in by a note, or in person.
Okay, very quickly, what Rex was talking about, a lot of events on that calendar there, and you know, you have hard copy handouts, so you don't need to write anything down, we'll give you some of those slides. We post a community calendar on our website, so you can see all this stuff we're talking about now. But particularly what Rex discussed, the full-scale exercise in May, please pass that around to the community and folks in your formations. There's gonna be some inconveniences around the garrison for about a four or five-day window in May. As we close some gates, do some ATFP, more protection-type drills, so bear with us. You'll hear a lot of announcements over the Giant Voice. We'll caveat everything with the exercise three times before and after, but just bear with us as we go through that, it's a mandatory required exercise annually for every garrison worldwide. So later on in May, you'll see some of those inconveniences, so bear with us, traffic will be backed up. Okay, Mr. Clink?
Evening, everybody. Don Clinken from MWR, I have a number of events that I want to cover, so I'll kind of move through them quickly. I'm probably not gonna tell you everything that you probably would need to know about these events, but I'm gonna start by telling you that if there's something else that you do want to know, the Humphreys MWR website is now up and running, actually for the first time since maybe the last two years, but it's a new reworked website, a pretty handy tool, pretty easy, HumphreysMWR.com. So, starting in April, this is my favorite town hall, because there's so much stuff that, we're talking about April, May, and June, and a little bit in July, so there's so much stuff going on that this is really my favorite town hall of the year. April nineteenth is the Earth Day Egg Extravaganza. We do this every year, and it starts off with a fun run. This is all, this all happens over at the Soldier Park next to what the main community gym, what we used to call the Super Gym, on the fields out there. And the run starts at nine o'clock, you can register at eight o'clock, and then that's followed, if you haven't been to an extravaganza before, of all kinds of things, we're mainly focused around the kids. There's a big egg hunt that takes place, we separate them by age, and plenty of stuff for the kids to get, it's more of a egg hunt or egg grab than it is an egg hunt. On the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, it was mentioned that we have Volunteer Appreciation Week, so great, great opportunity to honor all those folks that absolutely make MWR possible. Without the volunteers, there really couldn't be very much of an MWR. Twenty-fifth, it was also mentioned that the Volunteer of the Year Ceremony is here at the CAC at eighteen-hundred. Jumping into May, May third is the Amazing Race. We did it the first time last year, very much like the TV version of the same thing. I would mention to you that the first prize, Amazing Race is a two-person team, twenty-dollar entry fee, but well worth the money, because the first prize is two round trip tickets, air tickets anywhere in Asia. And the second prize is KTX round trip tickets anywhere in Korea. You can sign up at Outdoor Rec, or call seven-five-three-three-oh-one-three, they'll help you out. Seventeenth of May is Spring Fest, that's at Independence Park, the park over near the gate, that's an open-to-Korean friends event, runs between twelve and twenty-two-hundred. This is one of our two really major events of the year, there's a gazillion things to do, all kinds of food booths, we have the fest tent set up, we have entertainment in the fest tent, things going on all day long, and the field over there is literally full of things for both kids and adults to do, too numerous to mention, but it's a big day. Don't forget it, May seventeen is Spring Fest, so make plans to be there. Right now, tentatively, we're gonna open this Lish Splash, a water park on the thirty-first. We checked around with our partners on the peninsula, and we found out that they're opening some of them a week earlier, so we're working with our contractor to try to squeeze open that week earlier on Memorial Day. Little bit tricky to do right now, but we're working on that. But worst-case scenario, we'll be open on the thirty-first of May at the water park. The, I don't know if you know this, but the game, the room next to us, just to the other side of that wall, is gonna be a CAC virtual game, gaming room, and we're gonna have a combination of Xbox, online gaming, and arcade area in that room over there, that's being renovated. We've had a really, really long, tough time, we've been a year trying to get this thing done with the start and stop of capital purchase, minor construction, but it's coming along, and very soon, we should have that game, that game room done over there for you. And the good news is that just outside the building, we're also gonna put two spring golf cubes out there, they'll be big, full-size, bigger than racquetball court, and those contracts are done, so we're gonna have that out, up and running sometime this summer. The game room, hopefully, will be a lot sooner than that. Mentioned the website, so jumping into June, the theater production in June, it's called Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. They do productions right here in this room. I won't even try to tell you what that play is about, but basically, it's a biblical story. The dates are five through seven June, and thirteen and fourteen June, so a three-day weekend first, and then a two-day weekend to follow, and it's five dollars for adults, three dollars for kids, and I've never had a bad report on any of the productions that those folks have done for us. Twenty-two to twenty-second is Boss Beach Blast, and Contact Your Boss, folks, if you're interested in that, it's a big thing, five hundred-plus soldiers every year. Twenty-two to twenty-four, we'll follow on with the Beach Blast for the kids, the teens, called Summer Jam. And then the last event I want to mention to you is the Fourth of July at Freedom Field over, again, by the Super Gym, and fireworks, and the whole, the whole, the whole program will happen over there this year, just as it does every year. So that's all from MWR, thanks.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Dave Parksfield, and I'm from the Plans Analysis Integration Transformation Office. Our office does a lot of things for Garrison Commander, the DGC, and part of that is help manage what's going on with transformational operations. If you haven't noticed, or if you don't know, we're in the middle of one of the largest transformations in the UDOT business, we'll make a distinction, a lot of the things you see going on around us are directly related to that. We're literally tripling in size, population, so, and everything you can see going on around you on a day-to-day basis is a part of that. So as a part of that, we've got numerous units heading our way from the Osang area, so basically, you can sit there and just say that everything that's in the Osang currently is hitting our way. As of today, there are no unit moves scheduled for two thousand and fourteen, but in two thousand and fifteen, we've got about seventy-five, actually, in two thousand and fifteen, we have six, we've got about seventy-five Asian units. Next unit move significantly will come on our way in sixteenth and fifty-second, eight day, and that'll happen approximately January two thousand and fifteen, according to current schedule. I'm pretty sure you've seen all of the destruction going on around us, and Mr. Scott will talk about that here shortly. But along with that comes the requirement for a lot of what we call turnover of swing space moves, which will impact everybody here for the UDOT support for the transformation of the facility. So within the next, for the next ninety days, things that you'll see happen, things will probably impact you more than any of the others. June two thousand and fourteen, Hazmark and DPW Environmental will move to building ten-nineteen from their current location. July two thousand and fourteen, WIP, or that has impacted a lot of family members, will move from their current location on eleven thirty-seven to five seventy-seven. Chaplain's Office will move from building twelve twenty-three to seven oh-one, and we hand seven oh-one to the first floor of five seventy-seven. KSCs move to building eleven thirty-one and ten-nineteen, and DPW Building and Grounds will move to building six twelve. This list changes on a daily basis as updates go out, to make sure it gets out to the community. And if you have any questions, you can always call my office, nine-seven-five-four, this is my other line, if you have some questions. Mr. Scott?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bert Scott from the DPW. Previously, we briefed some massive construction projects over the months, fence moves, other associated mega details. Tonight, we're gonna talk about bypasses, and what we're doing with some of the roadways, and some of the reasons behind that, so that you can have an appreciation for some of this congestion and some of these challenges that are gonna start to present themselves. The first slide shows you the, some of the detours that we're gonna discuss for a moment or two, and please, feel free to come, I'll be here afterwards, come up, talk to me, we can point to some of the projects, and if you've got a pet project, we can discuss that in some detail, so please, you're welcome. Next slide, please. That's it. Phase two with the northern section, we're gonna be talking about the Super Gym, previous note, the Super Gym detour, most of folks have been affected by that already. We've already started Phase One, as you know, and as Phase One completes, the Phase Two will start, and that should last several months, and hopefully, we'll move on from that. One of the reasons that we keep doing these road detours is because our utilities are gonna be underground, they're gonna be in vaults, and raceways, and tracks, and so we're not gonna have the power lines and the utility poles and all of that underground. In order to do that, we need to put those raceways that I talked about, and those vaults, bury them under the roadways, or the side of the road. You can't bury them under buildings, so that's the reason we're going that, that direction. Next slide, please. We're gonna be, you've all, I think, Ron and you've gone offer on post, the Beacon Hill bypass, we hope that the contractor will complete the utility work ahead of schedule and reopen that road early. He's making noises like that's gonna happen, so we're hoping that, can't hold him to it, but we're hoping that that's exactly what we'll back the color. G Avenue, slide please, next. Scheduled to implement on fifteen April, today, Tax Day, by the way, I hope you guys have gotten all your stuff made on. Traffic to this section of the airfield will have to use this bypass until Freedom Road North, the section in blue on the chart, is completed the end of July fourteenth. Next slide, please. The intersection near the three-oh-four Signal Battalion Motor Pool and the road to the new barracks area, the bypass is required to complete, again, utility work in the vicinity of that intersection. This chart shows the up-to-date of the projects around the G Avenue Family Housing. You can see a number of projects listed there, the West Construction Gate, Family Housing, Child Development Center, Elementary School, Dodds, zero-four-zero, and that associated projects in that vicinity. Last slide shows us, looking at the fourth quarter twenty-fourteen, these will be projects on the installation, those in the blue font, AFH, Army Family Housing, zero-two-zero, Unaccompanied Enlisted Housing, zero-eight-zero, and the Televideo Center have been bubbled out. What we do is, is we, because of security, and safety, and congestion, and a number of other factors, we try to move much of the construction off of the compound, so we move the fence, and let construction happen, so they don't have to go in and out of the DBID system and the gate. We don't have the security issue, we don't have the third-country nationals, and all of the issues associated with who came from what, what country, whether they're allowed on post or not. And then much construction is already, we haven't moved the fence, gained that land, and surrounded by our security fence, so we leave it outside the compound, perimeter fence, that is, and those projects are shaded gray, have not yet started construction. So one of the things that I'd just kind of like to give you an appreciation for, is they talked about, we're building a new city, and we're tripling the area from around twelve-hundred acres to about thirty-six-hundred acres. We're more than tripling our square footage, seven million square feet, twenty-two million square feet. We're going from nine thousand supported population to over thirty thousand. And what does this all cost? We've got about four billion dollars' worth of construction under, on the way, under construction right now. And how many projects does that equal? About sixty, a little, but about sixty. Well, then the next eighteen months, as projects get completed, we reach the construction completion date, and we move on, other projects open up, begin, start, we'll have over a hundred projects in eighteen months, all working at the same time, to the tune of about six billion dollars under construction all at one time. So, a lot going on, a lot of activity, and you've heard the old saying, when you're usually working out in the once-Super Gym, that short-term pain for the long-term gain, we're gonna experience some of that. You know, there's gonna be some congestion, and some, some issues, that we are, are doing our level best to work around, so that it has the less amount of impact on your quality of life. But for the short term, we're gonna have some issues, we're gonna be, there's gonna be bypasses, and we'll try to keep that to a bare minimum, we'll try to keep projects on schedule and moving forward, so that in eighteen months to two years, we'll be on the other side of that mountain, and we'll be looking forward to having all those units move down from Seoul further north, all the way up into KC if we come through all of those. I'll be here, please feel free to come, shake my hand, and ask me why your lights don't work, and I'll do my best to get with you and figure it out. Next, we're gonna talk to the DES, our Security and Safety folks.
Good evening, folks. Bob Aldridge, DES. Real quick, the first slide indicates the office closures for passing ID and vehicle registration, the DBIDS, and the law enforcement admin offices. As a note, please don't confuse the DBIDS offices with the EARS and ID CAC As a note, please don't confuse the DBIDS offices with the EARS and ID CAC card issuing office. Uh, those office closures, along with a reminder for these office closures, will be published well in advance in the, uh, the Garrison Notes. Uh, as a reminder, uh, nine one one calls, uh, it's important when you call, uh, know your location, state the emergency, stay on the line, uh, and give a good, uh, callback number, so someone can reach you. Reference to DBIDS, uh, if, if you or family members or soldiers, uh, ensure that you re-register in DBIDS, if you AIP civilians, if you extend, re-register. Also, for newly arriving personnel, if you would, take back to the commands, they have ten days to properly register in DBIDS. This does a lot of things, some people think, well, I registered in Yongseong, and why do I have to re-register? Well, when they register in Yongseong, all of the data information that we collect, unit, phone number, address, those type of things are not populated, because one RC does not know the unit of assignment of the individuals registering DBIDS. So it's imperative that we, law enforcement, and fire, and medical have that information readily available in case we need that. Next slide. Uh, bicycle traffic, uh, laws, uh, in summertime, uh, lots of people are out on bicycles. Uh, remember, when you're riding your bicycle, stay on, stay on the roadway, do not get on the sidewalks unless it's a riding bicycle path. And I believe there's only one, uh, so far, that, that goes around on, uh, on Greenfield. So, remind your folks, wear the helmet, wear the vest, and stay on the roads. Also, with bicycle safety, uh, it is imperative that they register their bicycle with the DBIDS pass and ID on, this one stopped, building five forty-four. Uh, you don't have to have your bicycle present to register it, just fill out the form, bring the serial number with you, and a sticker will be given to you, and you put that on the lower right front port. Um, what happens if you don't register it? Well, if you go out, if you have a bicycle and you have not registered it, and you haven't looked at it in a while, if you go down and look at it, it's locked up outside, if there's a shoe tag tied to that handlebar, chances are by Friday, that bicycle's gonna be gone, because we do periodic bicycle roundups. Uh, what we do, if a bicycle is not registered, we'll tag it, within forty-eight hours, the traffic section, uh, from law enforcement will go out and they will secure that bicycle. Uh, I remember seeing the other day, someone reported lost or stolen bicycle, uh, if that was your friend, tell them to call the MPs, it probably got picked up, if it did, they can come back and get it, as long as they can identify it. Uh, subject to your questions, I'll be followed by, uh, DHR, Dave Satterfield.
Good evening, everyone, Dave Satterfield, Deputy DHR. Uh, first slide here, uh, the word of the day is ADPAS, uh, as you can see, Army Disaster Personnel Accountability and Assessment System. Uh, there's a website that we, uh, we've identified here, so that you as a, a citizen, as a DA civilian, as a family member, can go on and register on this system, and you say, sounds great, Dave, but what does that mean to me? Well, we have a full-scale exercise coming up, you already heard the, the, uh, listen glimmer about that from DP TMS. Uh, we're going to try to flex that a little bit and see how we can work accountability of personnel into our full-scale exercise. Not just that, a little closer to home, with the recent active shooter incident that occurred at Fort Hood, uh, they actually implemented activation of this system to try to find people who may have had some affiliation or a need to make contact with family members within that area, so it's good, it's, it's relatively new, it hasn't been around for a very long time. Uh, tap into it, it's a good resource, uh, for us to have at our avail. Uh, and of course, uh, this encompasses all units, uh, we can, we can reach out and touch anybody, uh, as long as we have access. Uh, I just found out two days ago that I'm a core, so, uh, I can, I can tap into that system and pretty much find anybody anywhere, regardless of your UIC. And again, individual units, please ensure that your folks are going online and doing this, because, uh, we will not be, uh, doing the data input as an individual thing, or a family thing, if you will. Please do ensure that your folks are taking care of business. Speaking of taking care of business, uh, we recently, within DHR, made a move, our official mail and distribution center is no longer located in building five forty-three, as of yesterday, it's now located within the Military Post Office. In order to go there, one, you need to know where it is, Post Office is real close by, just out, just door by the front counter and across the courtyard, then you gotta have a little map, which I will attach to the next slide, but, uh, just, just some information to know, operational hours, Monday through Wednesday and Friday, thirteen to seventeen hundred hours, then Thursday, zero, Thursday, rather, zero eight hundred to twelve hundred hours only. Be aware, though, as you take mail, an official nature, for outgoing processing to be sent out through the MPO itself, uh, cutoff for that is sixteen thirty hours daily, not open on weekends, and as I mentioned, the, uh, the location is shown on the, on the next slide here. Last but not least, AER, the Army Emergency Relief Campaign, uh, once again, I, I stressed this during our last town hall, soldiers helping soldiers, if you come through the gates, uh, actually the, the main gate every morning, or, uh, you're traveling around, uh, that side of post, you'll see that we have a thermometer up there, it's, uh, it's moving up, it's, uh, probably a little bit more than halfway right now, with thirty days left in the campaign, that's probably not a bad place to be, but, uh, again, lean, lean forward in the foxhole, uh, give, uh, to a, a great benefaction to our soldiers, uh, again, we're at about forty-eight K. Last but not least, it's not supposed to be confused with the combined federal campaign. Subject to your questions, I'll be followed by Major Ellis Ramsey.
Good evening, everyone, I'm the Major Ellis Ramsey, and, uh, this is, uh, considering it's only my last town hall, I'll be here next year, and, um, and we can, uh, back to, uh, the main post, um, and my replacement will be here, we said for the long tail, he'll be here in, uh, July, so. Uh, as far as our office closure, uh, we, we always post them in the, uh, Garrison Notes, and, uh, we'll be, our office will close on the second of May, uh, for our Peninsula Life Training Event, uh, in Yongseong, and then our organization date will be on, and, uh, we'll be here on post, um, getting out of the corner, so, uh, we'll be staying there. And, um, and then on the twenty-third, the training holiday, the twenty-sixth of May, Memorial Day, and then fourth of July, uh, holiday. Our location is not really new anymore, because our old building no longer exists, so, uh, but beforehand, we did have those, those, our own buildings, that's one of them, there's one, that's where it's gone online. We are now located in, uh, building five seventy-eight, that has our courtroom, our tax center, as well, and our social media, our services are there, so everything is co-located in the building, and, uh, we have parking, it's located right there, and actually, Fox, uh, parking, uh, issue. Our, our hours of operation and appointment line are also noted on the slide as well, and, uh, tax, uh, appointment line as well. Next one. Uh, we will be, uh, all day is normally, is always the first, uh, person being, here at Camp Humphreys, when I came, decided to stretch it out entirely, so there's, there's no time to focus on what a lawyer should be willing to do, uh, doing for a marshal, or, um, and every, sometimes, you know, they think that we're not like the TV show Jags, we don't jump on planes, but, uh, so what we try to do is get the community involved as well, and this year it's been no different, our theme here is the American Democracy and Rule of Law, Why Every Vote Matter. Um, we try to get every, uh, uh, age population in the community, we're doing coloring activities for pre-k, K-four classes, and DTC. Um, there's gonna be a presentation of a play, it's, uh, Being Bad, Welcome, which is purely for the K-four, and, uh, Humphreys Central Elementary Center, too, if you all in the community would like to come out, uh, we'll put an actual time in, uh, in, in Camp Humphreys Place, Community Theater, and, uh, now, this year, we're gonna actually play the roles for, uh, maybe do it in our courtroom, the first one, for the, the little kids with the DTC, and then we take them, make them panel members, we explain the Word of the Day's Liberation, take them into Liberation Room, they actually vote, we usually have to vote a couple times, some like to use one, some three times. Uh, when we finally get, if we have a judge, and they actually can have the verdict, uh, they announce the votes, it's actually, uh, it's actually a civil trial, so they're really divided. And then we'll do a poster contest for the Humphreys Elementary School, and that's gonna be, uh, and it's really not just a poster, it's gonna be different medias of art, and it's gonna be kindergarten, fifth grade, there'll be prizes awarded, uh, first, second, and third for each grade, um, and then for the middle school and high school students, first, second, third place prizes for, overall, they're gonna have an essay contest on the theme, and we're doing smaller discussions on the theme, um, with lawyers and third people, so we're going to the middle school and the high school. If there's any organizations that would like us to come out, it's just our opportunity to answer questions about what we do, what the rule of law is, and, uh, and actually just to talk about both, in the theme this year, why every vote matters. Uh, so if you all have any questions regarding the law day, our point of contact is, uh, Captain Brue, that's Jonathan Brue, that's K-R-U-G-E, and seven five three eight zero point, it will be more than that, just, next one. Uh, this is our tax center slide, uh, today was, uh, we had two, uh, timed, two schedules, uh, and tomorrow we move into our, uh, six, our, our final, uh, schedule, which is for sixteen April to fourteen June, um, we've had some amazing results this year, we've actually surpassed what we've done, we did it this time last year. Uh, we've done eleven hundred and forty-three federal returns, three hundred and ninety-three state returns, for a total amount of refund of two million nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, five, five hundred cents. And amount to be saved, uh, for the tax payer, is three hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. This is a free service we offer, uh, to, uh, invited contractors, uh, DX civilians and service members, and what's so easy, if you're dual military, or if your, if your spouse is coming to you, you need a tax, you can walk into our tax center, which is located, uh, right on the first floor, that, in our legal assistance, you can come over, get your special public attorney, and then you can not catch a tax, you just walk over to the right, and they'll square your way, they'll do the electronic filing. I do have my awesome, uh, tax assistance coordinator, uh, Ms. Christine Hopkins, uh, she can answer anything, be any time, there's issue, we stop people, without doubt that she can get moving if she has to, um, so there's never an answer that she cannot find, and she will find out anything. Um, we are very fortunate to have her again this year, and, um, we have some outstanding soldiers, uh, and we have borrowed military manpower that have served with us, and, uh, they're doing an outstanding job, as well as, um, today, I would say, we have a thank you, and, uh, all the time. Uh, our tax center will be closed on the eighteenth, the eighth of August, it's a different Friday, we just went through the today, it's a different day. Uh, so, uh, we no longer have the weekend hours starting on tomorrow, um, because most of the taxes that we're doing, uh, you can find through training, and we just don't have the number of clients that come from it. Taxes are due on the fifteenth of April, and, uh, however, because you're a college, you have to fifteen June to actually file, but, uh, the interest is pretty starting from the O on the sixth of April, they'll pass it off. If you have any other questions, please contact our tax center, they'll be at, uh, seven five three five six eight, to, uh, board the, uh, to get your appointment and, uh, answer your questions. Next one. As I stated earlier, if you are eligible, you find, and you require documents, just to make your tax filing experience that much easier, if you have issues and you cannot file electronically, we do offer paper filing options as well, so you come in, you give the tax, he does, he'll print it out, and then you can talk to him. But these are just, uh, these are all required documents that you need in order to get safe justice. And if there's any issues with rejections, and, uh, this option, uh, you don't follow, uh, uh, insurance, and individuals, so she can, uh, then she'll get into a follow-up, uh, despite that, there was, uh, some type of issue, uh, caused rejection, which is where. The types of returns, uh, the types of returns and the process of ten forty days, ten forties, uh, schedules, uh, CDs, if you have a small business, uh, business, uh, and there's no depreciation, schedule fee, and then rental income, uh, just know that your depreciation has to be done in part to your, uh, home debt. Uh, if there's any, if you are breaking thousands, we're all in the middle of this, my husband always said, I come with thousands, I need to come and choose, I just don't like. Uh, but if it's a business that you have, so you've got six or seven thousand out there, then we do reserve the right to, because we wanna be sure that, uh, you're getting, uh, the best quality service, and if it's something, you see, uh, the actual certification of our tax payer, we do reserve the right to, uh, to tell you, to let you know if you can't do that, but we will point you to something else. And also, just wanted to plug, we started, and this is our inaugural team, or, uh, move for, and that is an opportunity for young, uh, young people, high school students to come out and actually, we're actually having a blog, and, uh, teaching them, you know, how to be prosecutor, defense counsel, witnesses. We're actually have our judge for Korea, Colonel Dak, Colonel Lindy Dak, who's actually going to actually, uh, judge the competition. And that's why Captain Arbuthnot, who my secretary likes to run here this evening, is because she's actually, uh, moved some of the practices. If you have any, if, if, this is our first inaugural team that we're actually putting on, um, if you have high school, high schools that are interested in, um, yeah, advocacy, getting out there, getting on your feet, then please contact, uh, Captain Chris Tyack, or my office itself, and we'll be sure to, uh, get you all on the next, uh, reflection, something great to put on your high, your high school application for college, and, uh, tax. Uh, and so, uh, we provide all the materials, all the, uh, are willing, we provide, we provide, we have a personal officer here to be DA, and we're providing our, uh, dollars to them. Subject to your questions, I have them.
Hey, before we go to the chaplain, just a quick reminder, if you have a question, just raise your hand, we'll bring a card to you, ask you a question live. We've got three questions so far, all came in via Facebook, so we are streaming live on Facebook, again, just raise your hand, we'll bring a card and pencil to you. Got one right over here, and, uh, they'll bring it to us, we'll try to answer for you, this is your chance to hit the staff up, put them with some heart. Okay, chaplain, Holy Week, I know you've got a lot of announcements.
Next slide, please. Yes, good evening, I'm Chaplain Way, the Garrison Chaplain, and wanted to just highlight a few things that we're doing for you in your free exercise of religion and your spiritual fitness. Highlighted on the slide is Holy Week, it's the week of Easter, and it's already begun, and we're processing through that, you can see we have a full array of both Protestant and Catholic services available to you. We'll highlight just the, uh, sunrise service on Sunday morning, zero six thirty, in, uh, Freedom Field, that's right next to the chapel, we'll pray that there'll be good weather for that, so we can do that as well. Ultimately, we'll be moving into the chapel. Uh, you can also see these on our Facebook page, the Camp Humphreys Base Community as well, and most of them are, are posted on the Command Channel and the Command Note. Just one other, or two other items that I just highlighted, it's not on the slide, uh, coming up, the National Day of Prayer on May first, we're gonna have a luncheon here at eleven thirty in the CAC, and we'll be sponsoring and putting out more information about that, open to all Command Units and Soldiers. And then lastly, we are putting together our Vacation Bible School, BBS project for the summer, with selected dates for July twenty-eighth through August first. Looking right now to fill our volunteer spots, to actually be able to provide that for our children. Last year, it took about sixty volunteers to set that on for about a hundred and sixty children, a great project, so if you have interest in that, look on our web, web page and the page as well, to help support us, and, uh, no other questions, me, and I'll be followed by the chaplain.
Hello, um, my name's Colonel, uh, I'm a senior, in Humphreys Dental Clinic, uh, Magnus Lewis is right here, Sergeant McHawes. We're located in building five five five, Second Paul, the Health Clinic, our hours of operation is zero seven thirty to six, um, five, five, five. Uh, type of service provided, we do dental exams, cleaning, general dentistry, space, and, uh, education services for children from the age zero to adult. Of course, the priority of care is always, um, the, uh, family members, company, but it's right here, and, uh, next is a new thing, just started about two weeks ago, we do have, uh, limited dental clinic appointments from zero seven thirty to eight, zero eight thirty, Monday, Monday through Friday, for dependence of equity, so, uh, age thirty. Just give us a phone call at seven five three six five five nine, and it should take up to the point, that's why I have it.
Good evening, I'm Shelley Kennedy, the Principal of Humphreys High School.
Good evening, I'm Shelley Kennedy, the principal of Humphreys High School. Now, a lot of things have happened since our last town hall. For example, we have a brand-new director of DODIA, his name is Mr. Tom Brad Brady, and he will be on Camp Humphreys on April twenty-fourth, when we have our official ribbon-cutting ceremony. So, we're excited to have him here, the top DODIA officials for the Pacific will be here for this year. And so, uh, Mr. Brady, we will send out emails to all parents for both the high school and the elementary school, so that you'll know what time he will be here, because he is going to set up a form for you to have a chance to meet with him. The activities that we have, yesterday, we started our fourth quarter, it's hard to believe, we're already at fourth quarter, the year is going very quickly. Friday, we have parent-teacher conferences, and they will be set up in our gymnasium. Again, this is done for your convenience, so that you can come in and one fell swoop and see all your child's features. Uh, report cards will be given out at that time, that's why we hope to get you there, so come, pick up your child's report card, and then those teachers will be right there for you to have conversations with them. So, it's not an appointment, it's just a drop-in, come on in, we'll take care of that. Also, anyone with outstanding reregistration, it's got to get that taken care of, so we'll try to get that all done at that same time. And then again, April twenty-fourth at two o'clock, we're going to have random, or ribbon-cutting ceremony at our school, but graciously, the elementary school has decided to let you tour their facility as well, so from one to two, people could go and tour our beautiful elementary facility, and then come over to the high school auditorium at two o'clock, and we will have an official ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate this great facility that we're looking at. And we have a special music performance that will happen, uh, Far East Music, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, our high school students all have some very great opportunities as they participate in sports and some of the academic programs, they have what is called a Far East Conference. And we are hosting the Far East Music Festival at our high school, uh, they're going to share the time between OSAN and our school, but we're very fortunate, these students are going to perform at our grand opening, so there's one opportunity to hear them, that will be a brief little tidbit of what they can do. And then Friday at seven o'clock is the official concert. We encourage all of you to come, we've got an auditorium that will hold nine hundred people, these are the most talented musicians across the Pacific in our schools, and they're going to perform a free evening of entertainment for you, that I'm sure will be very impressive. So, please feel free to join us in our auditorium at seven o'clock on Friday, April twenty-fifth. And then the date for students to accelerate is May fourteenth, that time is getting closer, and that's for those students that families of PCS, they have to get their high school credits done in time, they advance and do the work ahead of time, so that they can leave here with graduation credits, their full credits that they've earned, so that when they go back stateside, if they're getting there and those schools have already stopped, they've earned their full credits from here. So, be sure you check with the registrar, if you're PCS, that deadline, to get that application in this way. And then we're very excited that on June fourth at six o'clock PM, our first graduating class from Humphreys High School will happen, so we're very excited. And that's our basic schedule, and so at this time, Humphreys Central Elementary is going to be.
Hello, I'm Jamie Wallman, I'm the Assistant Principal at Humphreys Central Elementary School, and we have a few dates that, that we need to do across, and, um, the report cards will, uh, call Wednesday, April sixteenth. Uh, kindergarten roundup is going to be Friday, uh, April eighteenth, and that's extremely important that we get everyone in, that we pass incoming kindergartners, and throughout the summer, if, if anyone knows any kindergartners, please, uh, have them head over to the school, so we can get all of those students counted, so we can, we can start school with just the number of teachers we need for those kindergartners. Everybody else does well, but especially those kindergartners. Uh, we have parent conferences on, um, Friday, April eighteenth, we have SAC meeting on the twenty-fourth, and, uh, Mr. Brady will be here that day. And on, um, April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, and a lot of people on the Garrison are going to come out and help us do sniff weed, because a lot of them have been, they've been catapulting, and, uh, a lot of people are going to come out and show us their, their really heavy equipment, and we'll be excited about that. But we really plan some really nice stuff, and we sure want everybody to come out and see, uh, what our kids can do, and what our community does too, so, um, there'll be going on, we'll be experienced all over, and that'll be a lot of fun. D E S O is April thirtieth, and, uh, yes, it is, is that all we want?
Hi, I'm Mr. Kimmerall, uh, from Commissary. Uh, I know that most of you have noticed there's been some issues with yogurt. It's actually started in, in, uh, February, we have a email here from Deca, this is not only Camp Humphreys, it's Pacific wide, uh, there's various issues, uh, the, the largest impact is weather on the east coast. Uh, most of this yogurt comes out of New Hampshire, they get slammed. It went on for a while, they did not shield. Uh, the, the problem being overseas, it was a six-week lag time. We order something today, we do not see the results of it for six weeks, things come over, like you, so, so, we do have some problems with it. We're hoping that, uh, within a couple of weeks, everything will catch up. Uh, we will have a delivery on Thursday, I can't guarantee how much we will get, uh, I've got my required delivery dates of all the stuff that was ordered, we are not getting everything that we ordered, uh, it, it, they've been cutting it. Hopefully, it will catch up, uh, the same with the almond breeze milk, there's been various issues with that. One of the biggest issues right now on the milk is that WIC just, uh, authorized the almond breeze for, for the WIC participants. That impacted our, um, ordering greatly and, and the amount on hand, it almost tripled the amount of sales. However, uh, we do have quite a bit coming in, we, we, uh, actually ordering sixty cases a week now. Then again, it takes six weeks from the time I put an order in to see the results. We're overseas, it's just a fact of life, living here. Uh, hopefully, you'll see more yogurt coming in, you'll see this, uh, the almond breeze, uh, and the organic, you'll, uh, improve to various. Uh, keep in mind that our store is only eleven-five square feet sales space, very limited, um, amount of sales space for the amount of selling. We do over a million two hundred thousand every month. We're the third largest seller in Korea, we will probably exceed, uh, some of the other stores in the very near future. We do have a forty-foot reefer refrigerated unit, we just dropped out back, uh, that is going to eliminate some of our issues with frozen product, we have more freezer space to be able to store it in. Uh, that should be up and running tomorrow, so hopefully, some of the things we're attempting to do will, will help out. Uh, some of the storage space for dry goods, later, uh, this year, mid-year, the isolation is giving us additional storage space, that we will be able to be, we will be able to bring additional items in, and keep them here on the isolation, and not wait for the daily deliveries. Uh, we only get deliveries once a day right now, we are trying to increase that to two. However, this, this is, uh, it's still going to be very difficult, with the number of people we have coming into isolation, based on the square footage we have, uh, it is very difficult. Let me do your questions. Okay, so, let me speak.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I've only got two quick things. First, um, jump down to the second part of our slide, the Earth Day, we're going to be supported with different events. Uh, now, the main thing I want to talk about is the theater, we all know it's opening tomorrow. The first show will be Captain America, which is a great show in three D, I saw it last week, really cool. So, please get out there, seven, uh, nineteen hundred, and this weekend for the kids, Rio Two, big show in three D this weekend, so again, theater was, with the digital, us going digital, the product that we're offering is state-of-the-art. Before, I hate to say this, but I was embarrassed, but now that we've gone digital, quality is great, it's a great entertainment value for the family, uh, so please get out and, and check it out and give it a shot, because it is very, very good, and, uh, again, state-of-the-art. That's all I have.
Hey, thanks, uh, listen, I know we've been updating you guys with a lot of information, just a reminder, we'll post all these slides on our website, as well as any questions that are asked tonight, we'll post those answers on the website within twenty-four hours. So, again, uh, before we go any further, and I entertain, I've got four questions here, again, it's open to the audience, or if we get any more on Steve, on Facebook Steve, please let me know. Uh, before we go any further, thanks to, uh, the Exchange, and thanks to Deca for providing the drinks, the pizza, and the snacks back there. Round of applause for those folks, thanks a lot. Okay, very first question, uh, I'll take this one, but Bert, I may need some help with this, I think I know the answer. We get asked this question quite a bit, mostly about folks arriving new within the first few months of, uh, arriving at Humphreys. Uh, this came in via Facebook, says, does Camp Humphreys have a recycle program on base for units or individuals? Well, I can tell you, we have a, a recycling contract, the dumpsters you see around the installation, we have a central contract, that contractor picks up all the trash, he takes it off the installation and he separates it, by plastic, by, uh, uh, metals, everything, and that's built into the contract, and they go out there and verify that periodically that he is doing. That's why you don't see, we, we don't have a lot of the recycle containers around the installation, because it is, it would be a violation of the contract. Is that accurate, Bert? Okay, hopefully, that answered a question for Rob on Facebook there. Okay, the next one. Uh, food service workers at the PX Food Court have been told that the facility is exempt from the peninsula-wide AC heat control. They have tried to, uh, get the key for the control unit, but have been unsuccessful, and they were told to contact the Garrison Commander for the key. So, Steve, were you even aware of that one? Okay, uh, Bert, we could, we can follow up on that one tomorrow, uh, let's see, I know it gets hot back there for folks working, I think that is an exempt facility for the AC condit, air conditioning season. I think last year was probably, well, that condition, okay, Bert, we can take that down and look into it tomorrow, and I think schools and CDC are also exempt. It is almost air conditioning season. Uh, the next one for Dodds High School, actually, this one came in Facebook, why is the high school registrar, or E D registrar, probably, asking for, for the soldier, copy of the soldier slash sponsors, ORV or ERV to reregister their student? No other Dodds school asks for that, why, or they should make copy of the orders reflecting command sponsorship, and the current heroes of the sponsor be added.
Okay, I'm happy to answer that, because they're talking about my registrar, who is following the rules to the letter. Uh, they received new training this year, and this is a new DODIA policy for us, that we have to do that, because I, we've all asked that same question, it seems redundant, but the fact is, we have to ask for the most current record and put that in, and that is to just check eligibility, make sure students are registered, you know, we have to have a complete file, all schools should be following that policy.
Or ORVs and ERVs?
Yes.
I guess that, yeah, it goes on, there's a paragraph here.
But have, tell, I mean, if that person wants to call the school tomorrow, we can help him with that and address those issues and, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was the concern, it's, it's PII information.
Okay, very good statement, and I, um, I will check on that for you, I will check with Dr. Ellis, who is at our DSO, because this is who's directed that we, we collect this information, okay? And then that's very important to know, that that is the concern, because it's, you're right, that's confidential information, and, and in those files, it's, it's kept in a confidential locked facility in our building, I mean, in a double locker room, I mean, we keep all those records confidential, as we do with your student records, but very good point, and I will take that up with the district office.
So, um, you may not accept the orders, you said, because on orders, it has that information, command sponsorship, approval, and the dependence.
The orders work for one part, but I think it's different employees that have, it's civilian contractors that have to have the other, I believe. Yeah, but for soldiers, it is seven.
They wouldn't have ERVs or ORVs, that's only for military. So, that's important, and I know I never turned in an ORV, but on my orders, it has my command sponsorship confirmation number, the list of my command sponsor dependents, and it has my heroes on there. And actually, when I reregistered my children this year, because my heroes is this July, they asked me for my extension, my AIP approval, and I gave that to them, and that has all the information, and it's minimal PII, but still PII, so that would probably be a lot less.
Okay, let me, tell me the other term, the ORV, and what was the other?
The ORV and ERV, that has all of our military career history on that.
I will check with Dr. Ellis and get this information, and I can just send it out to all families in an email, when I get that response.
Yes, and I think that was part of the concern with this, this one, it said, uh, why would they know, need to know my career assignment history, ERV and ORV, I think it's probably, okay, good, good points. Uh, Shelley, if you could just unpack the dates out, or we will post that answer.
Okay, all right, that's how we'll do it, we'll post it.
Okay, this one came in, I think it's for safety, uh, if you give Mr. Coulson the microphone back there, he'll probably need to answer this one. Says, is there anything that can be done to, uh, to promote safety while crossing the crosswalks, many soldiers and family members, and these families, and community members, uh, walk in front of vehicles without using the crosswalk, and they'll just walk with the crosswalk if the traffic light is red or doesn't?
Uh, what's going on, there's so much construction going on where there's actually no, uh, crosswalks in place, but what we are doing, we are going out, doing surveys, and trying to get as many crosswalks as we possibly can, but what I ask everyone to do is if you can, uh, take, stop, look, and then cross the roadway, uh, even if there's no crosswalk there, but if there's one twenty feet down the road, please walk down to that crosswalk, that's what I ask everyone to do. But if you don't see one, and you have to get across the roadway, because there's no sidewalk, I would expect you, and everyone else would expect you to stop and look, that's the best thing we can do right now, because of so much construction.
Thanks, Joe, I think that's really community enforcement from all of us, if we can just reinforce that to our friends, neighbors, battle buddies there, uh, and for those of you who don't know, we had a vehicle pedestrian accident recently, uh, by the turnoff near the Super Gym, we turned into the, uh, G Avenue Family Housing, a very poorly marked crosswalk, uh, individual turned in there in an SUV and hit someone crossing, uh, vicinity of the crosswalk, I don't think they were really in the crosswalk though. So, it's very dangerous with all the construction traffic, so, yeah, it's an entire community that's been set up. Okay, the next one for DES, uh, when is the next bicycle roundup?
It's currently, uh, it's currently ongoing right now. Uh, so far, we've, uh, we've picked up, I want to say about thirty bicycles, uh, we're continuing it, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, uh, Friday is the last day. So, if you want to register your bicycle real quick before it gets rounded up by the N P's, there's some registration forms in the back of the, uh, of the room, the DS table, just fill it out, take it home, put the serial number in, bring it back to five forty-four, Dave Kirby and his, uh, staff will give you a bicycle.
Okay, a follow-on question for that one. What happens to the grills in the bicycles after the roundup? Are they occasionally offered to the community for sale or any other reason?
Uh, they are, uh, occasionally offered, at, uh, we have a certain amount of, uh, we have a certain period of time we have to maintain those, and I want to say it's ninety days. Uh, after that, uh, we will, DES will get with, uh, the Garrison leadership and find out if they want to offer these back to the community, or turn those over to, uh, D O R or, or destruction. So, after the roundup, uh, you know, watch Garrison notes, it will be, uh, highly publicized if, you know, we give these back out to the community.
Thanks, Bob. Next one, Steve Pena, the Exchange, with the opening of the movie theater, did the prices remain the same?
Yes, same prices.
Good news, good, okay. That's all the questions I have on Facebook, Steve, any more? Okay, any more from the community?
About ten seventy-five, and it was, uh, one one nine, part of our, they got them, but it's English, they can't hear me upon them, and it was a fire, they were able to get the fire out, but she is ringing out about living on close now, and this is the second, and I heard where they called one one nine, and it just gets, they don't know what to do.
Sure. Bob, you want to handle that one?
Yeah, uh, I, I, I'm sorry they experienced that, uh, normally, uh, when they call the one one nine, uh, and they're speaking English, and of course you have, uh, Korean national on the end, and they will, they will put that personal phone and transfer it automatically to, uh, to USAG companies. Uh, that is what, you know, they're supposed to do. Uh, we know, I don't know, oh, for two on that, uh, what I can do is, uh, get with, uh, Matt Spritzer, our bar chief, and, uh, have him make contact with the, uh, emergency service providers in, uh, Peon Tech City and, uh, Jung Lee Local Area, and, and we will fix the issue.
If they live off phone, they can also call our night service. I got, I got cars headed back to the grid, ready, and call the state number nine one one, our operators will call one one nine and assist them.
Hey, great point, I, I will tell you, you know, it's a challenge for all of our family and communities, and all those, uh, you know, as much as we try, uh, to force it, uh, the local Peon Tech City government and the, and the it, uh, the local Peontec City government into, into doing that, at the end of the day, when the host nation challenges, uh, absolutely, you know, they, we do have, I think, an established MOA, Bob, so we do have a memorandum of agreement with the local city, and they did agree to do that, so, failing in that way, that's, yes, man.
I was just gonna make a suggestion, it's possible that if they were supposed to put them on hold and transfer, they may have put them on hold, and these people may have possibly hung up, that maybe we need to put that information out, that that's what's going on, you know, double check and make sure that is what's going on, but then let the people that live off post know that, because if they don't know that, they're automatically gonna think, hey, they hung up on me, because I'm sure there's no music going on.
Absolutely, and I think, James, that's what you were saying at the newcomer briefing, right?
And we advise them to go ahead and call us, and let us translate for them when we're ready.
Steve, if we could, just do a big publicity push on that, because, yeah, what they're seeing. this, if you wanna talk privately, any other questions, yes, man? That's all.
Um, I'm not sure, I can use, like, um... I tried to find out when the next one was, you can try calling, say, um, the phones ring and ring, which one are the contact numbers, and the other one for the cell phone contact, they should have been represented, so, how can you find out about that, and what's the most updated number I got?
You can just contact me, because the people that actually put the program in school on, just call them, I tell you, not to contact me, I'll, you know, they're, they're, they're all the, uh, places.
It's the one fifty-four preventative, yeah, yeah, and they come out of Daegu, yeah, so, yeah, they put that on periodically. Any other questions? Yes?
Certainly, mine's not a question, Al lacks money in employment readiness, uh, I, just a spouse looking for a job on post, uh, Mr. Pena, I just wanna, uh, thank you, sir, for the increase of family members hiring at the Exchange, we can say it, and thank you for your support, sir, and that's coming from the spouses.
Steve, that's an increasing spouse, any other questions?
Also, on our Facebook, as we have jobs that are available at the T N P's clinic, I have now been posting those, those job openings on clinic, so if you check our Facebook periodically, anytime we have a new position that's open, both KFC and AGS and GS employees, I post that on our Facebook, that doesn't only get after the community, so please keep track of our Facebook profile for the clinic as well.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Last call, and take on Facebook, thank you everyone for coming out, our next town hall meeting, Unity Town Hall fifteen, July twenty fourteen, hope to see you all there, uh, thanks to all the service providers, they'll stick around for a few minutes, come on up and ask me some hard questions, thanks.